All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, you want to roll call.
All right. Roll call, Mitch Hobson.
Here.
James Coyle.
Here.
Scott Patchen.
Here.
Pam Lewis-Reindl.
Here.
Jared Bermanson.
Here.
Terry Moyer.
Here.
Tyler Nelson.
Here.
Everyone's here.
All right. Ledge of Allegiance.
Ledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, proof of posting, a notice of delivered on two two, it was faxed to Star News. State Bank across Plains Black Earth Branch, posted here at the municipal building and at the post office and on our website, www-blackearthwisconsin.com. We'll move on to public input, any public input? Hearing none. Number five. Discussion, action on plan commission recommendation regarding zone rezoning on the, um, Esser Parcels.
Oh, sure, um, so a plan commission that was just immediately prior to this recommended, um, changing the zoning from conservancy to residential for the two parcels, um, up on the north side of the village off of Turkey Road, um, so they did recommend the reason.
Uh, so they can sell it and somebody can actually build on it, so.
Is that outside of our map here?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
What's that do for the village as far as moving it out of conservancy, any, anything?
Nothing, no. No.
The only, the only thing would be if there, if it was part of, if it was in conservancy as part of our greater Yeah. Plan for green space or park space or some sort of
Which it's not.
Which I don't think it is, so that would be the only concern.
Yep.
Is it accent your Turkey Road or through?
Huh? Acc- it'd be on Turkey Road.
Turkey Road accent?
Yep. Too steep coming off the other way.
Yeah. Be a little bit of driveway.
Little bit of blasting.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we go ahead and approve it.
One second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I understand.
Yep, I figured you would. All right, uh, discussion action on village board minute from eleven one and eleven twenty eight.
Any motion for, for village?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aries. All right. Number seven, discussion action, public works sewer jetting truck authorized spending. We brought this here instead of right to back to public works because it was faster to do it this way and the trucks already there, right?
Yes, um, so we purchased a truck, fixed it up, we went in small order, had, yeah, chassis portion, brakes, and then all this stuff looked at. The forty-three thousand came up with taking it to McQueen, which is a back or sort of vacuumed sewer every portion of it, um, they came up with forty-three thousand dollars. So without my mind, there's no second guessing anything, still feel very solid on the decision. Going into this purchase, there was going to be TLC that needed to be done to this truck. So, but they have come up, and if anyone would like to see the quote, I have it here, um, but what they have come up was about forty-three thousand dollars worth of repairs and or maintenance items, you know, some of that is
Or preventative, tank liner, preventative?
Yep, yep, preventative maintenance, um, basically is what it has come down to. I did disclose or list all of the funds that are potential, um, the first two are what we have designated. One was just for purchasing a new sewer gunner, so we could use that for repairs, I feel. A second item, the thirty-two thousand is from sale of old equipment. Still do have some funds left at Public Works at this time. Twenty-two new equipment purchases really, really have thirty thousand dollars, but I'm unfortunately pretty high over on fuel, just fuel prices this year, so I conservatively put, okay, maybe twenty thousand could come out there. Fifty-eight hundred's just what we have in use from sweeping, approximately fifteen hundred will be left from repairs if other things done in the past couple of weeks, so did list twenty-two, twenty tons, but really trying to avoid debt.
Yeah, so. Question for you.
Yes.
So of the forty-three thousand, did you feel that all of it had needed to be done right now?
Not all of it, I would be comfortable, or I would like to see maybe the thirty thousand, five fifty-three, or thirty-three designated at this time, as of right now, we have what McQueen has come up with just in doing the inspection, their whole checkover process, diagnostics, diagnostics, they got twenty-two hundred dollars into it.
But would we be leaving out?
Yeah.
Some stuff you could do, maintenance repairs, or if you had to.
Yeah, and stuff we can work on in twenty-three, twenty-four, you know, just more of that preventative maintenance. Um, biggest thing right now, and like I stated before, uh, Public Works Committee knew this going into it, there was a concern about the actual vacuum or the soils tank being an issue, so like I said, we knew this truck was going to need some love going into it.
Oh, no.
Uh, still, we would be maybe a hundred and ten thousand when we're all set and done. Third of the price of what a brand-new truck would be.
Yeah, that's what I want.
You're three years away from a brand-new truck, and say we keep this truck for ten years, you're looking at eleven thousand dollars a year, which you can't afford to get somebody to come in and do that maintenance every year for eleven thousand dollars.
The biggest expense is the tank relining. Relining the tank?
So relining.
And that's going to give longevity, so.
Yep, they're just putting a big steel band inside, very labor intensive, you know, sandblasting, descaling, and then painting up, stuff like that. Provided that we at a minimum do the thirty thousand, all that would be covering the tank, other things that, you know, need to be taken care of as well. Coming to twenty-three, try and catch some of those other items, maybe if we have to push it up to twenty-four, they'll catch up on the rest of it.
Well, but, so you're saying though, on here, we've got thirty thousand five hundred thirty-three aside for purchase of the equipment anyway?
Yep, that we have not used.
And we haven't used that.
And it hasn't been used because we use sewer.
Yep, so we, trucks have been paid for this designated sewer equipment, one is just a fund set aside to purchase a new one. We didn't touch that fund yet.
Yeah, and then.
So that could be used or paid off.
And there's also thirty-two thousand from the sale of an old mower, truck.
Yep, pickup truck.
So there is money.
You're designating those for something, right?
But that's.
Keep in mind, we want to save some of this if we come across a street sweeper.
Right.
You know, we have a lot more of that, we're going to try and maybe push that up to twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Um, so there is other things that this money could be used for, so we don't have to take the whole thing right away and get it done, we can work towards getting it rehabbed, refurbished over time, we're not doing it all at once. So we're not shorting ourselves across the street sweeper, um, hope that something else goes down or if we want to purchase something else this summer.
Are you, you comfortable with only spending the thirty thousand now?
Yeah, the thirty-one, the twenty thousand would be ideal.
Would you sleep better if we got it all paid for and done?
Yeah, what would you leave off? If, if thirty thousand, yeah, what would be left off if you went and with whatever the thirty thousand-ish of repairs and the, the other thirteen was not done, what's that thirteen cover?
Um, so there's, like I said, hydraulic, uh, oil maintenance, um, those things I wanted to add to it, um,
Some of the cheddar hose.
Yep, some hoses and stuff.
So, so hoping when you could be a maintenance.
Right, I mean, some of it, maybe we could just get in ourselves and do it type thing as well, so.
Do you think so?
Like some hydraulic hoses, swap out, stuff like that.
Yep, yeah, some hoses, gotta be hold some gauges.
I don't want to see any potential blown hydraulic hoses, because that is not good for your employees or the village.
Right, so.
Yeah.
The stuff you're leaving off, or the stuff that we're potentially leaving off, isn't anything that would, um, lower the lifespan of the vehicle by not doing it now, right?
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah, ideally, if we had unlimited checkbook, you know, let's throw the thirty, forty.
Right, I don't have it right now.
But trying to be conservative and keeping options open for two thousand twenty-three of, okay, hey, we come across something else, we'd really like to pursue this as well.
And, and the plan is, it's not even going to really see that much use over the winter months, you said you wanted to try and keep it off the road, so.
Unless there's a main break.
As much.
Unless there's a main break or something.
Yeah. Do you feel that you have a full time during the winter months that you guys could designate to make those minor repairs?
Yep.
Something else?
So long as it doesn't, as long as it doesn't snow every other day.
I'm thinking ten thousand total, if we're going to not pay thirteen thousand, just pay the freaking thirteen thousand. Be done with that problem.
That's what I'm saying.
Still got to pull it from some money from somewhere, you can't, you're not.
That's why I wanted to list our options of where that money could come from.
Yep.
But yeah, so basically you'd be still having to buy all those parts, but maybe Public Works is doing some of the labor versus paying something.
I understand.
So I mean, the total as far as labor.
Yes. I guess, I, my thought would be if I'm going to spend that kind of money, I'm going to spend money, I'm going to tell you to fix it, because then when something goes wrong, then I'm going to bring it back here to tell you to fix it. And then that is one thing off of our community plate, and it's on thirteen thousand.
I agree with.
Thirteen thousand, you got maintenance repairs too, if you needed it.
We're just part into this, let's just get this.
Let's just be done.
Yeah.
Okay, where you want to pull the funds out of? It's easy to say we're going to spend it.
Well, okay, so you have the thirty thousand designated.
Well, but he's, these, he don't want to use that for other things right now.
Right.
That's his point. He don't want to use this money for other things, he wants to keep it available.
Right.
So he's making a better choice by not doing it all to keep the funds available, he's got the money to do it all.
Yeah.
Yeah, the money's there.
But he doesn't want to.
And that's what I'm saying, because I, you want to make like thirty thousand dollars with the repairs.
Yep.
Or do it through them, and then save your thirteen thousand.
We, we can do something that ourselves.
And I'm saying, spend the whole forty-three, we've got it here.
Exactly, I'm just worried about that's going to throw us in a pinch.
Well, he.
Well, I'm pretty sure we've been in a pinch for the last ten years.
So there's nothing wrong, there's absolutely nothing wrong with conservatively doing something if you have a plan for the money, he don't want to, he don't want to waste some of his money on other budget items.
I understand that, I get it, but I'm saying that I don't think, I'm, I'm sorry, I respectfully disagree and say, we're going to spend that kind of money, spend that kind of money, and then when something goes, if something goes wrong, that we can always take it back to them, because I'm pretty sure you guys have things that you could do in the shop other than, I mean, we're always looking for other ways to get that street sweeper, we're still looking at ways, right?
Yep, and there were one.
And some of this money goes to our street sweeper, so.
So, so the other thought though, Pam, on that too, is like, if, if the thirteen thousand or a good portion of it is replacing hydraulic hoses, we pay somebody to replace that, we get only twenty percent of the hoses replaced if we, if they do it themselves, we could maybe replace fifty percent of it, if we're just buying the parts.
Well, some of that's your general, it's not hydraulic or anything, and, and that's something that you can patch, you can, I mean, you can go out and buy one tomorrow if it failed.
Right.
It's not, it's not an emergency part that's going to fail your truck.
Right. The other, so what, what it sounds like you're saying is the thirteen thousand difference, hold on to that until like June?
Yeah.
So that we know we at least get started into the mowing season, knowing, okay, two mows.
My mower, my mower just started.
Two mows in, we don't need a new mower, or new mower.
That's what he's talking about, right?
And it's not going to, it's not like if we put that thirteen thousand off, and then we decide in June thirtieth that we want to get it done professionally by the, by whoever the service center is, it's not like they're going to charge us eighteen thousand at that point for not taking care of it all at once, right?
Well, you have to.
Well, it's, yeah, or they.
Estimates are good, estimates are good for two months, or thirty days, whatever, but like.
December fourteenth.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah.
Yeah. That's Wednesday.
And I, I guess, you know, I'm.
That's ten days more than my estimates are good for.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that, I understand what you're saying, and I'm, I get it, you know, you're kind of like explaining it to me, and I, but I, if you're going to tell me, I would like to see exactly what you guys think you can do, knowing how much that's going to save, because again, I'm totally about, we're always going to be in money crunch, yes, I know we're in money crunch, and is the thirteen thousand really relative, when we're spending a hundred and ten? And we already know we need a new mower, and we already know we need a street sweeper, that's just my thing, that's one thing off of my.
Well, and, and I think he's doing it the right way personally, this way, with saving some of it back, because we, once we understand a few more things that we've been working on, there might be some more available funds in twenty-three to do more and more stuff, if, if we all manage it properly, and you still got to stay within your budget of your, your resources within, until that happens.
And, and like, I, I agree with Pam, you know, you're, you're spending all this money, you might as well just do it, but then on the other side, look how much money we just cut from our budget
Yep.
to, to, to balance from his budget alone.
And some of it wasn't even, some of it wasn't public works funds, right?
Right, and we, we cut a lot from our budget in general, so if we blow all of our money now, you know, blow all of our money now, that's a bad way to say that, but, um, come six months later, you know, maybe thirteen grand is kind of a drop in the bucket in, in some aspects, but, you know, that, that might be an emergency fund.
Yeah.
Is it qualified for RFP funds?
Cannot.
Okay.
Uh, put it this way, it's not supposed to, doesn't mean it can't.
Way to go on public, Matt, yeah.
It's, it's the way it is, right, am I wrong?
Not agreeing.
Fifty shade.
And the crew is comfortable replacing hydraulic, I mean, they're, they're.
Yeah, we'll do what we can, I mean, to a point, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm.
I used to replace hydraulic hoses sometimes.
You can replace, sure they can do it, we got a volunteer.
I think the hydraulic was simply with a term of saying.
No, yeah, you're right, I mean, there's other outfitting, yeah.
I think what, what Matt has shown is responsive budgeting.
Well, I'm not saying that.
And I, I don't think he's jeopardizing anything.
Right, if Public Works doesn't even touch it, say, okay, we only want a professional service tech that works on these things on a daily basis, we took ours down to City of Madison, took three of their eleven trucks down, they don't even touch it. So we could say, Public Works, we don't want you to touch it, but let's send it down in August, hey, we're comfortable with our budget.
Next year's budget, that's what I'm waiting for, right?
So that's.
And, and you've got, you have gone through that quote.
Yes.
And you feel comfortable saying that that's, it's okay to do that.
And I can work with those guys and make, we can make that dollar a month for whatever you guys decide, work. Biggest thing was, as Mitch stated, the tank liner preventative maintenance before that becomes a issue.
Huge.
That was kind of the big ticket item of.
And that'll be done with this, within this, okay.
Yes, yep, yep.
Yeah, and that's, I guess, that, that was my concern, Pam, too, is that like, I don't want to push off not doing all the repairs and then cause a bigger problem.
Right.
You know, but if it's, if it's things like, oh, we need to change the light bulb and the turn signal lighter, okay, you know, and that's, that's not quite a big deal, but a hole in the oil pan, right, we should get that, like.
Um, but there's still some things, you know, that we're going to like to buy, you know, some attachments to that.
Right, he's got them a te- bunch that was brought up.
Yeah, and stuff that, so like with our old one, we had a sewer nozzle that like dised down the sewer mains, plus there's a rough saw cutting tree roots out of it, going to the snow machine, we obviously have to upsize it to this truck, we can't just use the old one because of difficult sizing, stuff like that. Building Black Earth has never seen any stormwater pipes, so obviously that takes a little bit different tip, nozzle, what have you, it might be something in the future, hey, you know, we can send out some catch basins, but there's six inches of sand in this, like, let's see if we can try to pull some of that out, you know, trying to, it's not going to alleviate our flood problems, but maybe it'll help out some situations.
And, and how much in equipment, or, that's going to come in twenty-three anyways, we're going to spend that money too, and that's going to be what, did you get prices? It was like seven or eight thousand, you figured?
I wanted to get through this first, so.
Okay.
And thought when we authorized the equipment purchase.
Yeah, we kind of authorized some of that.
It was about ten thousand, I think, if what the plan was.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Somebody in my mind.
Put a bit in.
Yeah, and yeah, that's what I was just asking, you know, can we sell some of those parts, but yeah, you know, we probably won't get a whole lot for it. Probably cost us more to sell them than, you know.
I'll, um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, you were looking at the thirty-three thousand five thirty-three? Or thirty thousand?
Yep, so if we make an leave at that one, thirty-one or thirty-two, however you guys want to, like I said, we already got two thousand two hundred used with.
I make a motion we approve thirty-one thousand to have Matt go ahead and get the repairs done, that he feels necessary on the sewer jetter truck for now.
One second.
Any more discussion?
Will that, will that cover the two thousand two hundred that's currently in, on, into it?
Yeah, should.
Yeah, so that's, so we're at that twenty-eight thousand, or twenty-nine, okay. Thank you, everyone.
Do we need to designate which accounts come from?
All in, um, it is, the count's there, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thanks, Matt.
Thank you, everyone, and thanks for discussing all that.
That cleaning contract, uh-huh, is that just to talk about it? Okay.
I'm just glad we have new sewer jetter.
All right, number eight, discussion action, municipal building cleaning contract, this is not to review contracts tonight, this is only to talk about what happened and why they've been cleaning the building themselves.
Uh-oh. Yeah, um, so our cleaners quit, um.
In the middle of a contract.
In the middle of the contract, so.
Like the employee or the company?
Oh, the janitor king.
Yeah.
Okay, the company quit?
They, uh, they wrote us a letter and says, charge us what, five hundred dollars more a month? Three hundred and eighty dollars more than you're already paying a month, or we're done next Thursday.
Wow. Yeah, um.
You're, you're under contract till April.
Um, so, still needs to be cleaned in the meantime, so we've been scrubbing toilets, taking out trash, doing all the things, vacuuming, um, so yeah, it's been fun. So, um, we were reaching out, about reached out to a few companies, um, to get some quotes on just, you know, what do we need done for cleaning windows, haven't never been done the whole time that I've been here, um, that's over two years now, and I don't know the last time that they've been done before, so window cleaning, just general building cleaning, um, Bailey and I have talked a bunch about contract stuff, um, she suggested bringing it to their board also, depending on, you know, what, um, you guys decide if you want to, um, just have us reach out for more quotes or do a formal RFP, um, just kind of throwing it out there, but just as a FYI, we've been clean in the bathroom, and it's been very fun.
So my, well, thank you for.
Right?
Uh, I guess my first question is, we have legal recourse if they broke a contract?
Or is it worth?
Is it worth?
Yeah.
I, I did email them a little letter and asked them if they were willing to buy out the rest of their contract, they didn't respond.
Yeah.
And how much longer was left on the, is it a?
April.
Annual, or it's in April, okay.
So.
Five months.
And how many companies?
They had not, they had not raised it in twelve years.
Yeah.
And I think then they figured out that they.
I think it's fair that they raised it, but I don't think it's fair that they gave it up. They did it.
Contract, yeah.
For a week.
For, yeah.
You pass this within a week or both.
So we haven't paid them, right? We're not, we're done.
They're not here.
Any chance we have back payments checks on the way?
Um, so we've, um, received a couple, um, we were talking about whether or not, um, twice, so they would come in twice a week, um, every week, just to do all the stuff, um, we've been talking about necessity of two times a week, or it might be cheaper to have it to be one time a week, and, you know, they just get the main stuff, and then, you know, if our little office garbage can is full, we're fully capable of taking out the little trash can, um, in the meantime, so I don't know if, if twice a week would be truly necessary, um, but again, it's.
What are the quotes coming in as a comparable to what we were, we were paying with Janice?
And the other thing to look at.
Way a bit higher.
Well, what we're getting and what they contracted was not even fair, because they, they were only coming two times a week, the one time was just the fresh off.
Yeah.
Yeah, so a lot of stuff that, I mean, it wasn't fully being done, but they also were being charged nothing for it, basically, um, and like Mitch said, it, we haven't changed the contract since the inception of the contract, which is two thousand ten, so, um.
I'm just wondering if, if we're going to actually bid it out, if you guys should get together and actually make a list of exactly what needs to be done.
Yeah.
And, and that would include the windows need to be washed four times a year, or, you know what I mean? And then have it all as one.
You have to do that anyway, because you can't say, you know, clean, and then, and then there's a feeling, you're going to be like, that's.
Well, that's your definition. Clean versus, yeah, yeah, you need to define clean, yeah.
What, what kind of money were, have we come into?
Who are the companies that you contacted, I'm, I'm entirely interested in that.
Um, so a new one, they are local, just starting out, um, a couple here that are, um, living in town, um, Atomic Cleaning Services, um, so they also have a floor, they do the cleaning, they also do, um, windows, that's their other side of setup, so some people just do the cleaning, you have to contract out for window cleaning, um, so we were paying three hundred dollars a month, and that was spread across the funds, um, and also with library, um, so that was three hundred dollars a month, and twice a week for them is three hundred dollars per week, at the twice a week, so it's quite a lot higher, um, and that's
Crazy.
Um.
Check soon.
Just from what we were paying before, it's going to be a sticker shock, but it's just that we've been, I mean, really, um, kind of getting a pretty good bargain for ten years.
We're paying two thousand ten price here.
Right, um, and then, um, the other one was Immaculate Cleaning, also local, um, so this would be, uh, one time a week at two hundred dollars a visit, so, um, and then they kind of just gave a overview of, you know, changing out can liners, doing the surfaces, that kind of stuff, but, um.
Cleaning the toilets.
Yeah.
Cleaning the toilets.
So we didn't even have toilet brushes, so Public Works had to go buy them and then get all the stuff and.
They got a sewer jetter truck, what are you going to buy for?
Oh, man, clean a whole bathroom.
But yeah, it's been, the men's have been washing the women's, and that's surprising.
Is it?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Are you sure?
That's it.
How does, how do Public Works toilets and bathrooms get serviced, or?
No, no, we take care of ourselves.
Every twelve years. I know.
We don't, we don't clean it, we just pull it out, put it in the old van.
I thought they were disposable.
Yeah. Well, one of the things about going to RFPs is it's going to, it's going to lengthen the amount of time.
We're not required to RFPs.
Well, I know we're not, and that's just my comment, is that the sooner the better.
I, I think so too.
What is it, is twenty-five, twenty-five thousand is the limit for RFP?
Actually, only, really, if you're bidding out like Public Works stuff and things like that, is really the only time you need the RFP. Sometimes you can do it, above and beyond that, but.
I know a couple of private individuals that came, oh, I think they need one or two, some are really high, I think those are really high, tricky in dollars for one per week, they better be one.
I mean, when, when the other, how long do you expect them to be on site when they come here for once a week? Is that a thirty-minute, is it a thirty-minute?
Well, I think that's why you need to make a list of exactly what you want done and how often, you know?
Yeah. So if it's a thirty-minute stop, like, you know, spray down a toilet, scrub it once and flush the toilet, like, that's.
Yeah.
My kids over to do that.
Yeah, my kids can do that for better.
Another option that was floated was hiring a cleaner, also never been, I mean.
On a hourly basis?
Have a service just as individual.
Just like as an employee?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, somebody, yeah, you could do that too, but.
Um, but ob- obviously up to you guys to decide what we should do.
The question is, so I, I think we need to get a list of what we want them doing, how often?
Yeah.
And what you guys think would the best would be, I mean, a really good cleaning once a week, or two partial cleaning, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And windows, and then, um, are we okay until next meeting, or do we have to have a meeting before to get it approved?
That's fine.
Are we okay with that, as long as you guys are okay with it?
I know.
Well, I, I'll volunteer.
I can take a third one week, yeah. I can sell them in the back.
Scott?
I'm going to clean the toilets.
Yeah, I thought I got your respect, it's going to hurt my health, but okay.
I mean, I'm fine with continuing doing it, I mean, things got to get done, so.
I mean, I did not know.
I didn't know, I didn't know. I didn't know, I didn't know.
Well, that's why we brought it up to you, so everyone.
So, I think we should just pick a couple more as for instance.
Okay.
Can you just scan those and send them in our email?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The contracts, yeah, the, yep, the quotes you have now.
I do like that you found local people too.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Um, and then, with the board, Bailey, um, you mentioned earlier, um, do you guys want me to go to their board meeting? Just gonna talk about it for a little bit or if you just wanna?
I don't, that would be fine.
Yeah, so, it's gonna affect their budget, just what they're spending.
It affects our budget, it would be.
Yeah, it does.
To talk to the local board about it as well, and I'm happy to, um, like.
Lead that discussion?
Do a lot of that, but I think having any there is really.
Yeah, okay. I like it.
Yep.
Question, did, did you, did anybody look at what Mazo does for their offices?
Uh, we did not, or I didn't, I did not.
I just didn't know if, if somebody's driving out from cross, cross planes for them, you can sometimes piggyback double services for multi-stop discount.
That might be another thing.
I can check the main too, cause I mean, I know I see the cleaners in there all the time, so.
Yeah, the steeping.
Yeah.
Um, I can call across the street for the dentist office too.
And then the only other question I'd have is, what kind of insurance requirements does the village have for services like that? As far as if somebody's using chemicals, if they get hurt on the job using a chemical, that'd be something we'd wanna consider.
Well, generally.
What, what kind of insurance is, would we require? So, we don't just hire some, somebody off the street who doesn't have insurance.
They have that business, they have that liability.
And do they, did they bring in their own stuff or did they use our stuff?
Um, so, we would order, um, so, like, we order the toilet paper, paper towel, the products, um, and then they would do the cleaning, um.
What about the cleaning solution and stuff?
Um, for their stuff, I think it was in the cl- I think they brought their cleaning solution, but for like materials and supplies, we would buy it, so, we never bought like bleach for them to do the floors or things like that, um.
All right, let's see what we get.
Yep.
You guys, huh, can you do it?
Do you want an official anything or just work with Bailey?
Work with Bailey.
Okay.
All right. Discussion action, village revaluation. So, Danny, I got a nice letter in the mail.
And you did.
From the state. It says, hey, get it, get it revalued. Yeah, we were.
Well, we're.
I ignored it, it was, it was addressed to Shelley, so I ignored it.
We're approaching the seven year window, as I understand it, and if we don't do something, then they will, and it would be very expensive to have.
Well, it's, it also, it's if you're more than a certain percentage off the valuation, then they. Yep, so, um, we, we're gonna have to do it this year, no, no way around it.
We agree, right, we are, and we are already.
Yeah, we'd already kind of planned it anyway, so, um. You reached out to our existing.
Yep, so, that's in here.
Now, they have a, we still just signed a maintenance contract with them for a few more years. Five more years? What was it?
Through.
Six thousand a year, through.
I think it's thousand twenty-six or, is where for the, like, the assessment years versus like actual year? I think it's twenty-six or twenty-seven.
That's what you have out here is twenty twenty-six.
Okay, that's it.
And, so, at that point, um, and you'd also talked to the state, and they're like, hey, it's easier to use who you have. And I said, I didn't like that, I, I would like, since it's such a large amount of money, that I thought we should get more than one bid, cause otherwise they can write their own check.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe they won't, but I mean, I, so, I, I asked, uh, Danny to get more bids.
Yes, so, I, um, went on to the, um, state website, there's four other ones in Dane County that I reached out to. Um, one has declined, uh, they said that they're already full, um, I haven't heard from two others. And then, uh, the third one was, um, just asking what software we use, so, I sent it out, but I haven't heard back yet. Um, but basically from the state was, um, kind of, has to happen, just it is what it is type of thing, so, um.
And it does.
And I was just waiting to hear back from, but I haven't heard back from the other people.
Um, Associated, what, did you have theirs in there?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I didn't read.
Who's our old one?
So, that's who they've been.
No, it was before that, we had that done. Bill for.
It's been a while.
So, we just, well, we switched, when we switched, we did the full appraisal.
In sixteen they switched, twenty sixteen. Most of us were around in eighteen hundreds like you, there's change. Uh, so, Associated came in, what, thirty-seven thousand?
Um.
For a drive-by appraisal?
Really? On the.
Are you kidding me?
It's like.
Forty-two for full appraisal, indoor and outdoor.
So, at the bottom, that includes the maintenance, so, we already have to pay that every year, that's just.
The six thousand, we already have to pay.
We have to pay the sixty-eight hundred, so.
That's the open book and the reassessments and the.
Yep, um, updating the property files, that kind of stuff. Um, so, the full inside-outside revalu is a thirty-three, exterior only is twenty-nine. And then, um, if you go a couple more pages, um, so, there's also the, when I was talking to the state, there's something called, um, it's the IMU, it's the, um, intra-market update. So, unfortunately, since it's been so long, we're not eligible for that, um, but it's the cheaper option. They did say that some municipalities just budget it every, you know, two, three years to have that, instead of just a big, like a lull and then a jump and then a lull, so, they have it kind of keeping up. Um, so, that's an option for the future, but for right now, um, if you go back a couple pages, there's a grid in your packet about the assessment cycle, and then it says when, um, when the full or external or the IMU is appropriate. Um, so, it seems like we're in it for the full, um. Just that our, you know.
We, we are, we should.
So, if we do a full, could we tie that in with Zerral and do a RLU just to have that, uh, if they go inside, they do apartment checks double?
Only if they like you in.
Just to make sure that we have, we can re-update our RLU listing for insurers.
Is that something they offer?
I, I don't know, that's what I'm wondering.
We could ask, I don't know if they know the difference, we could teach them.
Yeah, I mean, we could.
We can ask, I'm not, I'm not sure it's in their realm, but maybe, might not hurt.
So, uh, what's the pros and cons of doing exterior or interior?
Well, interior is more in-depth if somebody's done something and never pulled a permit.
Okay.
You're gonna catch it, but that doesn't mean they're gonna let you in their house anyways.
Well, and that, and that's what I'm.
And then they do an outside.
They can't open the door, right? So, if, if there's a door shut, it's associated with.
They can't look in windows, they can't open doors.
Can't open windows, they can't open doors.
And, so, that's what I'm wondering, you know, like, knowing me, I'm not gonna let somebody in my house.
I'm not.
Right, you know, so, like, should we even pay for the interior one and just do the external? Cause I'm sure there's plenty of people in this village that are gonna not let people in.
I would say ninety-nine percent of them will say.
Right, so, I mean, it's not much, but it's a little bit of saving. Yeah, well, yeah, that's different, beer and cheese.
Yeah, beer and cheese, cookies, my cat.
And really, the state just requires that we do a drive-by, right?
Yeah, that's, that's still a full evaluation, it's just not inside now.
It's all exterior, isn't it?
And they.
It's all exterior and there's pictures taken.
Yep.
Of every exterior.
And do they do any review of the permits that were pulled as well since the last revaluation to?
Yeah, they do.
They, they look at permits.
They revalue based on permits pulled anyways.
Yeah, yeah.
Every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, permits are pulled, but permits not pulled at all.
No. Right. So, the only, the only reason we're bringing it up now is, they're six months out, if we order now.
Oh, wow.
If we don't, if we order months, it's six months out from there, so.
And it has to be completed by?
We were well over.
We have to do it.
When does it com- have to be completed by, end of twenty twenty-three?
Yeah.
And they can do it in six months?
Oh, yeah, they do it like a month and a half, don't they? Last time, I think.
Can we set it up then so that we do, do a twenty-five percent type of rolling assessment?
Uh, well, we, that's what we talked about, doing a fifty-fifty.
Right.
And doing fifty percent this year and that year, but the state was not thrilled about that, cause we're so far behind.
Okay.
So, we really need to do the full.
Just makes it more equal and more equitable for everyone, if they're in all at the same time.
Right.
But it would be nice.
It's usually that start neighbor wars.
And the state just never.
Like, you stop right here and then your next door neighbor just.
They're not gonna have anything to us.
Did you read the letter I got?
No, I didn't.
We're, we're, we need to do it.
Well, I think we should raise for those other two.
Yeah, no, I do too. I don't think we should approve money until we know, but.
And I think we should definitely plan it for our next boards, that we make a decision.
Yeah, it's gotta be, yeah, we'll have to, cause it's a six month window.
Right, it's a six month.
Yeah.
And it might even get longer than that, we wait till the beginning of the year, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so, it's ducks in a row for next meeting.
Yes.
Ducks in a row.
Must be in our books, that's true.
It's infrastructure. Okay. So, definitely put that on next time.
Yeah.
Number ten, planner RFP. This is interesting, we got one bid.
That's it?
So far.
And Jason is here.
Okay. So, as of now, we got, we've got one.
Um, so, when the RFP was put out, uh, Shandy had compiled the RFP, sent it out to, um, two organizations, and then, um, haven't heard anything, so, um, this was right around when she was leaving, so, I re- I reached out, I would use that, um, um, if you remember that guide that comes out every year from the league that has services, so, I reached out to all those, um, say, hey, are you interested in sending something in? Um, got a response from that, um, so, that was good. Um, one of the other things that we've never done here in the village was sign up for, um, the RFP online posting system. So, there's a state site that, um, you can post projects to, um, I was working with Bailey on that, so, when she put out her RFP for, um, the architect, then I said, hey, we've never done this, I've been wanting to do this, be a guinea pig for me, please, and then, so, she signed up on the site, got a ton of responses. So, um, outside organizations can sign up for the site, so, if they fit the criteria, so, if they're architects or whatever, um, they'll just get a ping when something pops up and they get the opportunity to review it. So, I just think it would get a lot more exposure if we were to post on that site, um, and just get it out and not just reaching out specifically, um, just to kind of see what we get from, from that standpoint. Um, so, I think that would be good, just to get more in. Um, thank you for submitting your pro- your proposal. Um, our, our lonely proposal right now, um, looking through, um, very nice with the other, um.
You must be able to use nearby.
Yeah, so, the other municipalities, it seems to have really good reviews and stuff, um, I just think it'd be good to have more to look at.
MSA, I assume, I think MSA is based up in Barboo, or they have an office in Barboo, correct?
They're here.
And, yeah.
They're being a lot of.
Yeah, they, absolutely, they can, they can actually, absolutely.
I, I would assume that they have, I. I, yeah, I do like, uh, I, I know MSA, uh, does, does good work, and being in Barboo, I would assume that they have a lot of experience with the, um, the general co- connection of Dane County, Sauk County, through the bridge, the trail system, that sort of stuff, that level of economic planning, I'm assuming is very familiar with, so, I assume. Don't know for sure, but.
I, I do think we should go out and put it out, extend it, not get rid of it, and start over, extend it out for, try to get more bids, just to see.
Yeah.
You guys wanna say anything or add anything? Go ahead.
We, we, we drove out, the happiest.
Yeah.
I'm Jason Delarias.
Yep.
I'm Brad Alcater.
Hi.
So, we are, uh, we're actually based in Madison office, uh, MSA has a, has a Barboo office, one of our colleagues, uh, Jeff Thalen, actually, who's also listed in here, is based in. Um, and I would note that, um, the RFP that, that he released, um, I'm not sure how well it matches exactly what you're, what you really want right now. Um, I'm not, until we talk with you more, I'm not certain, do you know what you really want right now? And, so. You know, uh, whether it's now or later.
It helps.
We anticipate, starting with a discussion about, what are you really trying to get done right now? What are, what are the needs, what are the priorities? We're, you know, we would, as, as we noted in here, and I wouldn't characterize this as a proposal, but rather as a, as our qualifications and to say, you know, we're looking for a, a relationship and a discussion about what you need and what you limit on.
Very nice, it's very well put together, right?
Yeah.
It is very well put together.
I haven't been able to look through all of this in detail, but, you know, one of the questions that we've, I know from the Parks Committee is, um, we're looking for somebody to help us find grants and then write those proposals to bring in that money. Is that something that you always be able to help identify grants that are, you know, Parks specific or Public Works specific and then help us draft those and submit those?
Yeah, uh, we, we can certainly do that, and we've got, and we've got a dedicated funding team that we kind of share Jeff with, uh, so, Jeff's focus is primarily on funding. Um, I would say that there are, uh, you know, a, a thousand potential places you could go out and apply for money, but I have a pool that actually have money.
That's the key, right?
Yeah, and so, uh, you know, the, uh, the stewardship program is, you know, head and shoulders of everything else in terms of funding for parks, and that's always where we look first. But, um, the, the short answer to your question is, is yes, funding is a big part of what we do.
Yeah, I would, I would say, you know, at least from the, again, from the parks perspective, um, I think we, we know where we wanna go, we know kind of the general idea of what we want, we just don't know how to get there. We don't, you know, funding, budgets, things like that, it's just not there, you know. Things like we're gonna replace our basketball court, that's thirty thousand dollars, you know, where do we just come up with thirty thousand dollars to do that? And so, looking at grants and things are how we're, like, trying to solve that.
Yeah, that makes sense, and we don't want to, we, we don't see that it makes sense for us to engage in something where you, with you, where we have a, a specific extensive scope of stuff that, that we're gonna, you know, run out and do. Uh, we think it's much more kind of piecemeal, like, let's work through this a little bit at a time.
Yeah.
What, what do you really need right now?
Right.
Yeah, probably every committee and every, uh, even Public Works or whatever, has that same question on something that they have. So.
I think something like this would be extremely beneficial to the EDC, uh, committee as well.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yep.
I kind of noticed that they work with a couple of our surrounding villages and they're downtown.
They can help planning too, so, yeah. So, I think, I think we should extend it, the RFP for a while, uh, how long, what, what's your thoughts?
Um, do you guys want to review it first and tweak what was put out there, um?
Wouldn't hurt, I don't wanna.
Yeah, we can email that, cause I don't think, you didn't do that, did we?
Uh, did not, Shelley did it.
Yeah, Shelley did it, but yeah, put it in, we can review that.
And then, um, do you just wanna bring your ideas to January board meeting? Then we can get it and then send it out or?
Like to get the RFP out pretty soon, I'd, I'd like to get going.
I think, I would, I would like just see what, you know, just have individual thoughts come back in, see if we can rework it a little bit and get it out as soon as possible.
Yeah.
I mean, I think.
Let's see what comes back first, and then, if we have to deal with it, we'll have a special meeting.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah.
Cause I don't wanna wait, I wanna get it going.
Yeah.
You're saying put it on that list that Danny said.
Yep, yeah.
And it gets a little more visibility.
Yep.
And then hopefully by the January fourth meeting, we'll have.
And then we can all tweak any questions of what she's gonna send out.
And maybe have an action item on January fourth, first, yeah, that'd be good.
Well, yeah, if, if there's a lot of discussion and we need a meeting, we'll have one.
Okay.
Thanks for coming, gentlemen.
One more question.
Oh, go ahead.
So, um, is it, your new clientele, taking on new clientele, what's that looking like for you? What's, uh, if we went with you, are, are we gonna be waiting six months to starting services, what, what's that look like?
No, I mean, we're, you know, it's always kind of rolling in terms of, um, new, new projects and new commitments. As I understand it right now, um, I don't see it as a big time commitment.
Okay.
Uh, and so, it's really not an issue, uh, fitting in, we, we also happen to have some, some new staff starting out in the new year, so.
Okay.
We know concerns about being able to start when we're ready to do that.
Perfect.
Cool, awesome, thank you. All right, anymore?
So, I will email it out to all of you and then you're gonna send me your ideas?
Yeah. And if they're easy to solve, we'll solve them and just get it out, otherwise we're over meeting. All right, number eleven, discussion, introduction of electrical review document. Now, this is, it'll be pretty hard to understand. He is coming next month. I just wanted to get it out there so people could look through it and see what was what. Um, basically, what, what it says is, uh, we, our electric utility was basically breaking even before we borrowed money. Cash flow wise.
Then we borrowed money and now we're not.
Then we borrowed money. And we just got a three point something rate of return, six and a half percent, rate of return, three percent increase in electric from the PSC. It's not enough. Um, but there's some things we're gonna do, so, next meeting, Jeff's coming in, um, to explain this. Um, and Ellers is coming in to help us discuss if we're gonna continue the substation or if we're gonna pay back some money or the best way to use it and not lose money or use it for other things or. I mean, the problem right now is interest rates have changed hugely, so. So, to pay that back and refund would probably be more than using that for some funding, plus other projects maybe, because it's so cheap of interest. So, um, we, we're going to ask Ellers back, they'll be here, and Jeff, so we can all make a decision together and see where we're at.
And then-
Would we, I mean, it'll be discussed at the time, but are you, or would we be allowed to reuse that money for something other than the electrical?
They, they actually took it to bond council and came up with, we've already had online meetings with them, because I've asked those questions, and they've gone to bond council and said, "You can use it for this, this, or this." So, or this, right? So, um, what?
Street sweeper, you're well, you're well, you're well one?
Well, and some of it could be used to repay the debt services on the loan. Um, the only problem is long term, um, personally, if it was legal, which it's not, I would say, let's leave it in investments with interest rates where they're going to make a lot of money out of it, but they can't do it.
Can't do it.
So, sucks. You can't use public money to make money and, yeah, so. So, this is just out there, um, very confusing document, um, but he's pretty good at explaining it.
Can't we beg COVID forgiveness and get interest free period?
Right, but you can actually see, in your cash, in your cash ending line on your PSC form, you see how we went to green by one point two million dollars? That's our loan. So, before that, you see where those red lines are? Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And what did you ask?
I just asked her if she understood it and if she had additional questions, because she, she worked with her every day. As for a few years now, if she had additional questions, then I think I would, would have questioned that.
Yeah.
And I'll just say too, like we talked, uh, meeting before, that there's discrepancies between what, what Vanguard numbers were compared to the village numbers, and I just want you guys to be careful not to like, I just think those things haven't been fixed yet and that could throw off where you're seeing trends. I don't know, it's just hard to evaluate.
When Ellers was here to say, say review your numbers, because that was their job, right?
No, they don't, they, they actually, they don't review Vanguard numbers. They review PSC numbers and village numbers. Not, Vanguard has no say in numbers. And this guy knows the difference of those numbers. It's still not going to change the outcome of the position we're in. Has no change, we're still-
No, but it's the way I'm saying, it might look like something else. It might look like it's coming from something different.
He, he's discussed that and he'll go through some of that, yeah.
That's all I'm asking is that she works with me and I want her to feel comfortable with her job. She's agreeing with what, what, you know, so Vanguard's numbers are different than the village's, I agree with that.
Well, they, they don't look at the same numbers either, so.
I'm, that, I'm just letting, hear me out.
Yeah.
I want employees of Vanguard Electric to know that the village's like, they're behind them and that if they're not comfortable with the numbers, because Sean has said repeatedly, he's not comfortable with that. That we are behind them and they, their questions are relevant and get answered.
Yeah.
So how do we get those numbers to master?
That's exactly.
It's going to cost you money.
That's one of the questions.
It'll cost you a lot of money.
Yeah.
The, the, the difference is, so, some of the numbers that we see in the PSC compared to some of the numbers that we've seen in, in some of the reports and stuff that they, and they don't get all the numbers that the village does. I mean, as far, they have no, they don't get our sales numbers, they don't get our billing numbers.
I'm not disagreeing with you, man, but all I'm saying is, I want her to feel comfortable with this piece of paper and that she understands the process also.
Yeah, yeah.
So if she brings questions next, to the next meeting with Jeff, then those questions are answered at Vanguard Tappy, where that be, and we flow along nicely.
Yeah.
And is that how you like it for us to bring questions to that meeting? Or would you rather us talk to Jeff beforehand and get?
He's just going to introduce, he's not, i- if we're going to ask for more things, it's going to cost more money going forward. He's just going to come and say, "This is why this and this is what this shows." And in the end, your cash balances are your cash balances. Numbers, I, there's some, there's some, there's some issues with how things were depreciated and stuff and how some of the things were done that could make our utilities look more valuable or at least have some value, because right now they're depreciated to zero. Um, so them types of things definitely have to be fixed in the future, so, um.
Does Ellers bear any responsibility for the position we're in right now?
Who, Ellers? Not really, they, they go off of numbers looked at by what we give the PSC. And Vanguard don't give the numbers to the PSC, we do. So, and the PC, PSC didn't have too many problems with the numbers they were given, so, um. Uh, basically it says that we started to lose money in two thousand eight. In two thousand seven, we had one point nine million in cash in our utilities. Lot of reasons for it.
Other reasons?
We know some, embezzlement was one, right?
I was, I was wondering.
There's a couple hundred thousand. Um, not managing our budget properly as a board is, is the biggest fault of anybody's.
Yeah.
I mean, we allowed that, we allowed that to happen. And I'm not saying the people here, all of them, but-
The villagers.
Yeah, because, because they were never doing the budget as they should, in my opinion, and this is just my opinion. Um, and they were allowed, Vanguard during some of that proportion, was allowed to spend a lot more money than they should. So when, before Sean, before most of the crew that's there, there was a few years where they spent nine hundred thousand a year doing projects.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, one year.
Wow.
So.
Didn't that include like the whole?
GPTC, or testing.
The whole outside, uh, line, didn't we do that?
Well, they did, but you don't have to spend all your cash in, in three years.
Oh, I understand.
So, you know, it, it's, it's, it's this board's fault for allowing it to happen, so. It, and you know what, it's, it's easily fixed. We're, we're actually, the village is in a very good position financially. Um, the electric utility kind of sucks, they owe the village some money, but with, with proper management and some ways going forward, we can turn that around in a very short period of time. So, you know, Sean feels really comfortable about the transformer, as a spare and not finishing the substation project. And if we do a CA, we weren't allowed to even, the purchase of transformer or anything we've spent, we were not allowed to use in our last rate case because it's not in operation.
Right.
So we have to do another rate case right away again, anyway.
I thought we had to wait for so long before you could do another?
You can do it right away. And we're going to do a CA construction, um, thing for the transformer.
And was that a CA test?
Uh, what's it stand for?
Authorization.
Uh, construction authorization, PSC has to do it, and then we can actually use that in our rate case then. So there's ways to do that. We've met with, um, Jeff, I even asked, um, Alliant Energy has helped, Vanguard has helped. Um, spent a lot of meetings behind the scenes, just trying to figure out what's what, so.
Okay, I have one comment about, I was at that PSC meeting when the rate was approved and, uh, one of the presenters, uh, pretty much told us we were just backwards for not having the proper technology to communicate with them. I thought was ugly.
Yep.
For him to do in that situation.
Well, the problem with that, Scott, is we thought they were coming here, they didn't tell us we had to be online. We didn't post it online.
It was his attitude.
I know, yeah, but it's a government organization, what you expect.
Yeah. Okay.
So anyways, it, it's not great, but it's not bad, I mean, easily fixable, and, uh, we'll get there. So, you got anything to add, Lydia? Okay. Ah.
You guys got some reading to do.
I'm a little worried when I saw the picture packet.
All right, discussion action on invoices to be paid. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Oh, second.
Oh. Do get out of the parking lot, update it, update it.
Lot of paper going on.
Yep.
Bit, bit, are we, are we giving the, uh, cleaning crews payment to their, is that the cleaning or bathrooms now?
One had to do, I guess one question I had was, uh, state bank, this was a late fee?
Yes, that check was mailed instead of dropped off like usual, it just got into the mail pile.
Okay. Um. But was it a, what, did you call them?
Did you call them?
I have not, but I can.
Call them. That, that's, that's one thing that, you know, okay, we mailed it, posted, dated, you know, you got it. I think we're-
First time since I've been here, so I don't think that they have an issue with it.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
If they do, tell them to call me.
And, uh, my only other question was if I could get a, a detailed Quill invoice.
For Quill?
For, for Quill, yeah, I'd just like to see what.
Any certain?
Just on monthly basis, we, toilet paper and all, anything that you buy from Quill?
Okay.
I'd just like to see that, just, you can email that to me, Danny.
There was, there was a lot of motors.
Where they ported, Dodgeville.
So we had the, somebody drove that truck all the way to Dodgeville, is there a reason to have to drive all the way there? They got a special lift or?
You just had really good luck there with service. I've gone to Kaiser, um, in Madison, truck came back full of grease in the interior, sat there for days before the service, um, and same with Milton Ford, got issues there.
Can't get into Milton Ford to get it back.
I just wonder, is there, is there a chance we could look at that being done locally by certain local mechanic? Or?
Tell me who's local.
Who's local, yeah.
Precision tone?
This goes through.
I don't understand, I don't know if that truck can fit on their lift or whatever.
Every, every couple of years it goes same thing.
Same question.
Same question?
Why, so. And it's, it, I mean, it makes sense sometimes, but.
Yeah, we just have good luck, um, and actually they're, you know, they're on our, they're a little bit cheaper.
If they're, yeah, if they're taking care of us, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I'm pretty happy with what we've had there so far. But yes, I definitely run it through my mind, I mean, there's Sauk, there's other places, but it's just.
Have you Sauk lately, because you can't get into Milton Ford and Kaiser, yeah, it's a bummer.
Thank you. What's this, uh, USA Blue Book? It's like a science experiment going on.
That, that one, that one's your stuff from, basically this is just, uh, lab coats for dealing with. Leach chlorine in the well houses, and then, um, just, uh, have stuff, spans reagent, that's for testing chemicals.
Okay, I see.
Water, line testing solutions. You do in-house daily.
I didn't realize you guys kind of always suited up to do that stuff. That makes sense, now that you say it, I think, yeah.
We get, kind of tired of clothes getting bleached, so.
Yeah, I understand.
Big team, I figured it'd be okay.
Yeah, yeah, totally.
You've got, just a question, when you said you wanted more of a breakdown for Quill, more than what she provides in the?
More to detail, more to over fans for, for the product. That's just a general there, that's just dividing up the invoice.
Can you remind me, will you do it cheaper somewhere else?
Never know.
No, I was just going to take a look at it, yeah.
How, how much do you want me to pull?
Arrangements, right, they says what they are, don't they?
Yeah, but like, do you want me to go out and?
Whatever, just a couple months would be fine, I mean, that'd be fine.
Any more discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Office update?
Um, just want to give an update of kind of what's going on, um, so I've been working on financial report stuff, uh, which will be covered next, but, um, Town and Country Con- Contract has come in, um, they've been, um, they sent out a, um, anything, um, so they sent out a new packet that has information to all the residents. I don't know if you received that in the morning yet, if anyone? Um, both come, um, it's also on the website, they have a new website, uh, just kind of, that has the calendar, how to recycle things, where to take stuff, um.
You said Town and Country, it's called Terry, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so Town and Country, yeah, so Town and Country's ending at the end of time. Um, so, starting January fourth, we pick up day, they have a new calendar for collection. Um, that will be also anonymous on this website also, it'll be fully updated at the beginning of year.
Well, um, so I didn't see in the December letter and maybe it's set it in there, but, um, will like the residents get that information prior to January so they don't put their garbage cans out on Friday instead of Wednesday or whatever?
Yes, um, so this is the, I can confirm the dates, um, so the carts are going to be delivered starting next week.
Thank you.
Uh, so they, they wanted to stage it where they send the information out, where it would be received and people won't just toss it aside and forget, but not too close where it's just like, now what do I do? So, um, I can confirm with him, but I'm assuming that it'll be mailed out next week or received next week or the week after, um, just when the carts are coming and, and I think that-
I'm just worried with the holidays and stuff, that people are going to be confused, whatever, forget and, yeah.
And now that I'm thinking of it, I think that there'll be something in, like, attached to the handle where it'll have a little packet or something with the carts that are coming, um, for the rest of it.
They're very good here, mine's falling apart.
They're still going to be confused anyway, so.
I think that my trash can has taken a beating in the last couple of weeks.
No, there's been a lot, I'm, I'm off, I, I see.
Oh, yeah, my, my trash gets broken.
I think they don't really care too much for us.
Yeah.
I've noticed, I've noticed there's a pattern, it's in every other week for mine, personally, like, one week they're stacked nice and neat, kind of a fun art project for them. The next week they're thrown in a day or two.
All right, what else you got, Danny?
So information is coming, um, on the website, that's going on, so, um, yeah, just kind of going on. And you already know about the toilet scrubbing.
Yeah, right.
When are you guys, I'm sorry, yeah, when are you doing this? Yeah, is this like part of your day job, or are you guys staying late to do this, or?
Uh, just as, as I get through the day, um, days have been very busy, um, so, like, I take the trash out.
Well, I'll take toilets tomorrow.
Okay. I'll vacuum. So, yeah, just as we get to it, I mean, it's not like we're vacuuming and taking out the trash and cleaning the toilets every single day, because that's not what was happening before.
So are you handling like the bathrooms, okay, the, the main hall in your office? And Bailey, are you and your staff doing, what are you guys doing in the library then?
I'm doing, um, the library, so I'm doing the trash and the recycling in the library and then I also take.
And the vacuuming in the library.
You're vacuuming in the library.
So who kept the vacuum?
Um, so we used to have one and I thought it was ours, but I guess not. Um, so Cartman had one that they use for their office in there, that I fixed, um, so now it works really well. I mean, we're just putting stuff in. Um.
So are you, you're cleaning the vacuums every day?
It's a room bus.
No, not every day.
I said they only did it once a week.
Yeah, so it's, um, so like when the trash can gets full, just take it out, and.
Well, I'll be your spot checker, checker on the bathroom.
Okay.
So you don't have to worry about that.
Okay. Um, yeah, that's, will be soon fixed, thank you, for you.
Yeah. All right, anything else? I, I will say that they've been very busy with some of the follow-ups and trying to get a hold of accounts and where and what, and, I mean, we've had many discussions, and, so, it, it's coming along very well, so.
Yes, it's getting better day by day, and Lydia has been super helpful, coming over, doing, um,
Yes, thank you for all the help.
Bank rec, like, just super helpful, would not have any hair left if she was not the helping. So, thank you very much, and Beth, also, they've just been like picking up so well and it's been really, really great, and we all work really well together, so that's very helpful. Um, you know, and there's things that, um, Lydia knows how to do in the system and just from the accounting side that she does with Vanguard, and it's nice that, um, she has questions about stuff, it's like, oh, that's what this is, so it's kind of, kind of Frankenstein style, yeah.
And it's really nice to see everybody working together, library, village office.
Yeah, it's, it's super collaborative and love it, so it's been very good. Good. It's even good.
All right, discussion action on financial reports.
Okay, so, figuring out the treasures reports, um, worked on this with Lydia today, um, just filling in the numbers, um, so like I said, from last month, um, I'm looking at this one for, all you guys should know, um, so like I said, the, the, this is all manual, um, none of the accounts, accounts flow into this spreadsheet, um, so it's not a true, like, report that can be run from the system, so going off of the numbers that we get from receipts and what's and, you know, the journal entries that we're trying to discover, and Lydia knows more about the account stuff on that end, so, um, supposed to balance, we're finding out where things aren't balancing, um, so there was an issue with reconciliation from, um, Sept- September reconciliation, uh, so we had to get Civic involved of clearing out the entire rack, redoing the rack and just getting that cleared up, so, um, just trying to get everything how they should be done, um, discovering a lot of things of the processes that weren't done necessarily the most efficient or, um, you know, best way within the system, or just kind of a lot of workarounds that shouldn't have to be done that way, so it's been a lot of time figuring that out, but every day getting better, so, um, that's what we have for numbers, bank balance versus book balance, so what's in our accounting system versus what's in the bank, so that's what the two different columns are.
The bank rec did balance for October, which is why I ended those numbers late today and thought, hm, I wonder how this doesn't balance, so I'll look into it, but I don't know, I don't, it's hard for me to always understand how she got where she was, so we'll just take me some time to do that and, that's why I'm like, oh, we'll give them some numbers that we have and just be honest.
Um, and if it was just plug and play, I wish that I could just give you, here it is, but it's looking back through the files of why was it done this way this month and why was it done this way this other month, and, okay, let's go pull June and let's pull July and see what, where the numbers are coming from there, so it's not just pop, pop, pop and, ooh, everything's good.
We're short seventy-two thousand, are we, there's a discrepancy?
Just within the, what's in the numbers for it, it could be just dates or the September rack, like I mentioned, um, just not balancing it, um, so it'll, it'll wash, we just gotta find where it's, where it's going to. Um.
So potentially this will be, I mean, does this work for you, is this too much work, is this?
It's a lot of manual stuff, um.
I don't know why we're going back, why did we go back to this?
It was just a way to show it right now, as they're getting the other stuff set up.
Okay.
The other stuff just was automatically made.
I mean, wouldn't that have to do, most of these numbers are a month behind anyway, so it's like, I mean, this really doesn't make sense.
So what you're, so what you're doing will eliminate this altogether and you'll just be able to pull it off the system.
I mean, if you want me to just, you know, so I run the, um, so you see the next page report, so a lot of it just has, some of them have names, I have a case in with Civic right now of trying to get all the titles added where it doesn't just say Department one-ten, Department one-twenty, so trying to figure that out also, since that was never set up, um, but just being able to run reports, um, I had a two-hour meeting with Bobby from Cross Plains of, um, she's their clerk and finance.
She's CPA.
And a CPA, uh, so it was a super, super good meeting with her, showing me what reports they use, um, for their board meetings, so it's just different for every community and what you guys wanna see, um, I prefer running a report because the numbers can't just be typed in, the numbers are what they are when you press a button, um, and that's, is what they are.
And that's your goal, is to get the.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's, using a computer as a computer, not an electric, not an electric typewriter.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Yes, um, so lots of moving pieces, lots of things going on, but all good things, and so I appreciate the patience of trying to get there, but, um, if you have anything on this treasure report that you really wanna see, like, I can get that to you, I don't know what's helpful to you, what you want to see, I mean, you, you guys tell me what you want.
Yep.
That Jeff Donick or however you pronounce his last name had some nice looking financial statements that he was able to show us on the screen, and I just wonder if you guys might like seeing what he has and you just think, oh, this is how he puts out the numbers that make sense to people who don't look at financials every day, so he might have some simple ways to input what, cause I think he's very familiar with Civic.
Yeah, he, um, he says that he can help with, and we talked about this before, um, he uses MyExcel, it just automatically populates them and, and he can help us with that too, so. Pretty sharp guy, so. All right.
Um, yes, it's just going through all the stuff, so, working progress.
Are you in motion to approve the meeting?
Oh, I'd move approval of financial reports as re, as presented.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Opposed?
All right. Vanguard, have we had a Vanguard meeting since our last board meeting, Lydia? I don't think so, it was the same night, wasn't it, or?
I.
Was.
It wasn't the same day.
The same night, so we'd already covered that. We had it at five-thirty and we had to be here at six. Yep. Um. What, what do you have for reports? I know he's at a meeting in Maisel you had to be at.
Yeah, he was just checking, he's saying he's on his way and I was gonna say, maybe don't come, but, um.
Well, we could, we could move it down to the end of the.
That's fine, cause he's on his way, he may as well just talk, but he feels like it was worth it.
Just turn lights off.
All right, Carrie, you haven't met either, have you?
Uh, we met on Thursday, November third, which I think was just after our meeting.
Yeah, probably.
But, um, just a standard, you know, we reviewed treasures, financial reports, gave committee reports, no real action items, pretty standard meeting. Really to report.
James?
Uh, we met on November seventeenth, just thoroughly went over bills, uh, the Wolf Construction started on the phosphorus, um, production, which we're, eventually we'll talk about that, cause Maisel's gonna start doing a bank reduction too, but we're also getting to the point where we don't have enough phosphorus credits and we're gonna have to buy our way out of it, I'll explain that next time we go through that, but, um, we did start a project now that'll get us through till twenty twenty. We're gonna have to discuss, I'll just kind of like go over what the phosphorus reduction was.
On the.
Um, so we just started violations and, so is it our next meeting is December fifteenth?
Do you want that as an agenda item, or?
Yeah, it probably wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, it comes out, yeah.
Just wanna get.
I don't know, I would have it in January. It'd be, yeah, you can.
Yeah, we can always.
You don't think of.
Yep.
All right, EDC, we ended up canceling it because they didn't have enough business participants for their wine walk.
Oh.
Yeah. That's unfortunate.
Yeah.
Not enough business.
They didn't do it all?
It wasn't done, no, so. So we will sc- reschedule one here right after the first of the year. EMS?
Uh, EMS, we met, uh, November tenth at six-thirty, um, so Jim Wick is back volunteering on the ambulance, picking up some hours, um, he's also helping with billing, um, so that was, uh, that's pretty significant that he's come back and do it, um, kind of shows the shape that we're in, that somebody who's been there for that long and retired had to come back to and start volunteering again, um, uh, some comments there, uh, trial by fire, things of that nature, um, had high call numbers, um, at that point in time, uh, forty to forty-five, um, in between meetings, so, um, that's pretty significant, um, but the reason to call that out is because there was no missed calls due to out of service, um, at that point in time, um, they were only out of service for about eight hours, um, I do believe since that point in time, they, we, they have been out of service and have missed calls, so that's, um, unfortunate, I was hoping to bring that as good news, um, but it does look like that is happening, um, they, uh, District One got awarded, uh, roughly sixty-three thousand dollars from a, a Flex Grant, so that's money that I think is going towards the trucks, I believe, I'd have to confirm on that, or if we've even decided where that's going yet, um, and then, uh, training, um, NTC, so we are, because we're in the District of Madison Technical College, we have to go through them for EMS, EMT training, um, however, NTC provided us a letter to allow us to go to Southwest Tech, um, to, um, allow them to come to us to do the training, um, so that's still, that's, that's huge, um, that's really huge, um, still a lot of moving pieces there, trying to figure that out, uh, but possibly looking at bringing training to the Maisel area, Maisel Village, um, twenty-twenty, starting in twenty-twenty-three, so, I, probably not the, the spring semester, I would assume, I would assume more probably the fall or even summer semesters, but it's looking like that's happening, um, and there's possibilities to use, uh, FAP funds, um, to provide for that training, um, so more, more to follow, but it, it, we're trying to move in that direction to get the training brought back so we can address some of those, um, issues with the travel, stuff like that.
Yeah.
Um, I also brought up, um, you know, the, the, having a crew here in Black Earth at the Fire Department, um, fully willing to do it, you know, we just gotta kind of connect those dots and get those pieces together and, and figure out what that looks like, um, so, uh, you know, it, it, it's an option, uh, I think really what they're waiting for is, um, a big enough crew in Black Earth to say, to volunteer to do it, to say, okay, let's take the next steps and get this going, so, if there's enough people, you know, if they wanna reach out to me and then I can pass it on and say, hey, we got five people that are interested, what do you need for a crew size, you know, we can start working on that, but we, we need, they need EMS, EMS crew, needs the Black Earth volunteers to step up and say, we are ready to take this on, and then they'll be willing to start looking at what.
Of course, they're gonna get enough certified people.
Just hone yourself a couple of times.
Yeah, so, all good things, you know, we're, we're trying to, the, the volunteer shortage and the out of service stuff, um, gonna take time and energy and money, unfortunately, so, um, other than that, if we're meeting, I just lost it, it should be January seventeenth, I think? Twelve, sorry, January twelfth at, uh, six-thirty.
Thank you.
There, there's potential funding then to help offset the cost and so that volunteers don't have to bear that cost of the training upfront ahead of.
Um, there is, they do provide a stipend, um, so, and I think that was more, the stipend's more towards like, uh, the commute gas and things of that nature, so they might look at changing that and what that looks like, um, I don't, it's too early to really say what that looks like and what we'd be able to provide, but I know there is like a system, um, in that, um, bringing it back into the local area versus going to NTC, you know, maybe we, it, it gets reversed, you know, they pay part of the tuition instead of gas mileage or something, but it's all still kind of new and up in the air.
It, it's at least nice to see Southwest Tech come in.
Yeah.
Where are they?
Wish Fire could do that.
Uh.
We cannot.
Yeah, and I think, you know, from just hearing in this room and hearing from what I hear on, on the thing, I hear there's a lot of people that are interested in volunteering that need the training, but can't dedicate the time to go to the east side of Madison twice a week for three hours at a time, they just can't.
That's a big thing, yeah.
Two hundred and eighty hours?
Yeah, yeah, and I think it's, I think they're maybe trying to add more on.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, they basically want paramedics.
We don't need to call it mora.
They're trying to push it to be paid.
Yeah.
That's all they're trying to.
Yeah.
That's right.
And I think our district is one of, one of the last to have, like, volunteers and run it the way we do in the state, so.
Holding.
I do think that it's a position that should be paid, but it also needs volunteers to supplement.
When we start paying those positions, that's, you know, that money starts going real quick.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We, we brought in two FTEs and, yeah.
Well, the, the.
Our LTs.
Bad part, good and bad part is, is once you force it to go fully paid, now the scale goes high.
Yeah.
And, and you're done, you, you're gonna pay big bucks, and you never go back. And that's why they force it that way, they're like, eh, we're not paid enough, let's force it all that way and then it's competitive, so. All right, thank you. Yeah, you again.
Yeah. Library Board met on November fifteenth, um, we, uh, reviewed and approved the Dane County Library System, uh, uh, Extension of Library Service Agreement, we reviewed and approved, um, Eligibility for Services Policy, and Bailey plans to review and update policies more regularly going forward, so that's on her to-do list, which is really good. Uh, we had an RFP update, which I have a little stack here, speaking of RFPs, so they're gonna be reviewed, so she had good success with her RFP request, um, she's working on the Library Board vacancy, um, and the carbon installation went well, and she had, kudos to her public works that provided a lot of help, and I believe a purchase of donuts were involved. And the big news is, uh, not to steal or thunder, but we have a wedding coming up in twenty-twenty-three, August twentieth.
Yeah.
It's gonna be married, and our next meeting date is, uh, December twentieth, where we're gonna review these. Among other things, Bailey always has a full agenda.
Yeah, so I guess to add to that, um, for eligibility for service, um, there weren't really any major changes, I mostly wanted to reference our animal policy and eligibility for service, um, because it was something that, um, Dan knew and it's kind of mentioned in eligibility for service, but not, um, in much detail. Um, but in general, I'm trying to be more proactive with keeping our policies up to date and making sure regularly that that's still how we wanna do things, um, so that when an issue comes up, we're ready for it, we're not always being. You have an interested party for the Library Board vacancy, but I'm trying to set up a meeting, um, to go over the role and the responsibilities for that, um, and so there will be updates coming, I'll be talking for that, because that's something that the Village Board approved.
Yeah, I appoint, they approve, yeah.
Um, the art auction ends on the ninth, that's Friday, we had a record number of donations, it was seventy-seven, um, which is more than I've had before, um, we also have a new friend's president, um, and we'll be having a reception for her and for the end of the art auction on Friday at four P M. Um, we also completed, um, the digitization grant, which, um, I remember from way back when, um, with the Wisconsin Humanities, we got a grant for the digitization of Black Earth newspapers to make them more widely available, um, on the internet, um, and so we, we're awarded a grant around six thousand dollars, um, and we're able to digitize twenty-one reels of Black Earth newspapers, which is about twenty years' worth, so we're into the seventies now, which is really exciting, and we'll.
Wow, a good decade.
It'll be about six months before all of that is formally available, just because, you know, um, a lot of that stuff has to be done by hand, unfortunately, um, especially when you're adding things like words so that it's searchable, so, um, it does take a little bit of time, but it is coming.
Right, does that go?
Um. I think, so they have more grants, they're yawning for this process, I think it goes back to, this, this one in particular is from the late forties to the early seventies, and we were able to digitize with this grant.
From the seventies.
It's really blurry.
Yeah, maybe we'll skip the season, so, um, and our next meeting is on August eighth.
Awesome, thank you. Scott?
Works, met on Monday, November fourteenth, um, discussed the Vanguard activities with the Christmas lights going up and frost charges beginning December first, we discussed the plaque at the Children's Museum and, uh, working on that, uh, we've already discussed. Uh, we've already discussed the Jetter amount, so I won't go into that. The Cooper Property, um, even that's been working with Tony Walker on surveying, on the Main Street Survey. And, uh, we got order sheets for placing buildings, uh, on the Wisconsin Surplus, see if somebody will bite. And, um, committee decided that the Cooper property, we'd like to see him removed by March thirty-first. Um, he's been pricing long more, you know, but he's, our preference is, of course, to get a street sweeper tonight. He just did a hell of a job with the lease because of Paul Butch coming in and saving the day. Multicat Tower Park's complete, bathrooms are closed for the season. Upping the equipment for incoming snow. Didn't talk about the ice rink, but I'm sure that that's in the works. Um, and then we said for future item, future agenda items are South Street and I don't think we're gonna need to do anything with the Jetter, Children's Museum and Cooper Property. And, um, I just wanna say it's been, uh, been a good year for Public Works and I think that you're doing a bang-up job, Matt.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And we did not set a December meeting because Merry Christmas, Derek doesn't want to.
So January first.
So, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll send out a meeting date so everybody's aware of the next meeting.
So we're not meeting in December?
We're not gonna be in December.
Multi-Tower Park looks great. Did it get up?
It is awesome.
Thank you. Um, so I guess just a couple of things to add.
Okay, parks, who cares? Sorry, Matt.
So behind well, too, just, uh, guys have been working, that's all kind of handwork because it was too steep for the machine to get in there and do any work. Um, guys have been taken off, whether it be the kids, taking time off, funeral leaves for people. Uh, Bobcat went up for some more fewer, everyone was covered with that. New snow blower came in for that kindly after fourteen months of being ordered. Um, ice rink, we are gonna try to work that in. And we have our Whistler, which is the Wisconsin Information System for local roads. Um, I did complete that, got that off the DOT, so.
Thank you.
Is ice rink going back over in the tennis court again?
Uh, we were planning to put it there just because of the ability to lock it off.
Yeah.
I would say it helped out.
I like it when the lights go on there in the winter time.
Sean's gonna put some new lights on, too.
We're gonna try them. Why would we put new ones?
Half a boomerang.
Sure is.
Uh, all right, parks, we met, uh, the fifteenth of November at six P M. Um, we approved putting the Phantom Mailbox and the Red Hawk subdivision. That was a request from the residents up there. It's a kind of addition they're starting. Um, and just for awareness, it's not attached to anything. It's not dug in the ground or anything like that, and so it's, um, not damaging the park in any way.
Not invasive.
But that's.
Not invasive.
It's non-invasive, yes, and, and that was basically the only stipulation that we had. Um, would like to see this maybe extend to the larger village as a whole, but, um, this is something that the residents are doing, so, you know, we can't really ask them to do that. But it, um, maybe it'll pick up throughout the village. Um, we've got some picnic tables coming. Did we order those?
I gotta just send the stuff.
In the works, so we got some new picnic tables coming. Um, part of those were, uh, donation from, um, one of the residents, so that was, that was nice there. Um, we tabled the discussion on the AEDs and, um, the Cooper Property. Uh, we've got, that is on the surplus now, right?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Um, so we're still looking at that, but we got all the electric, gas and everything else turned off, so we're, we're making progress on that. Um, discussion around what we're gonna name the park, so we can actually, we're a name, stuff called Cooper Property, um, that, um, is gonna be coming up. I have some ideas around how we can get the village involved in the naming process versus just having us come up with some generic name. Um, uh, let's see what else. Uh, the big part of the discussion was around, we wanna have a five-year, uh, development plan put in place. Uh, we already have something to put in place, um, that I wasn't aware of, so it'll be more reviewing that and updating it to, um, our current year and what our plans around that. Um, and in regards to that, hopefully Joey, you're listening, um, we are gonna have a public hearing on January seventeenth, um, to, and we're inviting the, uh, the village and everyone to come in and kind of have a open forum discussion around what the parks are gonna look like, what residents want from the park and just kind of get a general sense of what direction the village as a whole wants to move, um.
What time are you gonna?
Uh, that will be at six P M.
What date?
January seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth, yep.
At what time?
Six P M.
It's a lot of one seven sixes. I have another one.
So, um, the, the kind of the idea behind it is we have a, several large ticket items in regards to the park that we need to address within the coming years. Um, a lot of money that needs to go into that and we wanna make sure that everyone's involved and, and kind of okay with where that direction is going. So hoping to get some input from the community, um, and then we'll, I'll have a little presentation and kind of say, well, what we've done, what we're expecting to do and, and just get some feedback from that, um, to help us plan a little better. Side of that, so, uh, no meeting in December, next meeting will be that January seventeenth at six P M then.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
And we'll think, Jen, we didn't have a police committee, right? No?
No, no, I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me, Mitch?
Yep, I can hear you.
Hello?
Yeah, our last meeting was in October and we did have a meeting scheduled in November, but if I remember correctly, Danny, we canceled it out of respect for everyone's time because there wasn't an agenda. Um, and we currently do not have anything on the calendar. I were, I am looking for some guidance from the board on preparing agendas for these police committee meetings, cause I have not been a committee chair in the past and I am not certain what all is involved and who I should be talking to to get agenda items prepared for upcoming meetings.
Hey, just talk to me and we can get an agenda set.
Yep.
And how do we establish the meeting dates?
You get to call it.
Yep. Usually you say with the other committees at the time, you just say, hey, what's good for you and kind of work through it.
When does our new police guy start?
Twenty?
Nope.
Oh, no?
No, December.
December.
Oh, yeah.
Your book was over.
No, Carmen just said it was gonna be done again, I thought, but.
No, twenty-first.
Twenty-first?
No.
He's on the calendar.
I wouldn't write it down. Permanent marker. Oh, this.
I respectfully asked the Police Committee Chair to hold off in December, Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, Public Works.
Yeah, I was maybe thinking the second week in January when we give, um, I believe it's Officer Watkins, I hope that's the right name, um, an opportunity to get in the village a little bit before we hold a meeting.
Yep.
Well, give it Danny, you can email the other committee members.
Okay.
Get out.
Cool.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you.
You're up.
So, but then, uh, one of our last services for the year, Vol Police, um, out on Sherwood Road, just a small line extension to Peter House. Um, every year we hire somebody to come in and do a full inspection of our substations. We do them monthly, but this guy comes in, does infrared oil tests, everything on our substation transformer to make sure everything's looking good, harmonic. Uh, we got that back here a couple of weeks ago, that turned out very well, so kind of comforting. Hopefully that stays that way, but, um, in good shape there. Uh, like Scott mentioned, we got Christmas lights up. Um, I believe this week, uh, school has a meeting on voting on what they're gonna do with solar. They got some different options, so waiting to hear what comes out of that. And our next meeting is January seventeenth at six thirty, is that our shot?
Oh, it's January seventeenth, man.
Thank you. Lydia, you could've done that. Probably in shorter time, too. Thanks, Sean. All right, number sixteen, consideration to go into motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent C. Um, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Village Benefit Compensation Plan, roll call, roll.
Oh, do you wanna do a roll call?
Yeah, closed session, we always do.
We don't have to. Well, certainly, you don't have to every single time, but I can.
Yep, might as well. Yeah, we keep it constant.
Sure.
Thank you.
That'd be nice. Thank you.
Okay, well.
You wonder why I don't wear a coat.
Why? Roll call, let's go around the room. Jane?
Thank you. Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Mitch?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Jared? And Pam?
Are you leaving? You don't.